Good evening, everyone. Welcome to work session for Lynchburg City School and School Board and City Council. We're all glad to see y'all this evening and this joint committee, we propose work together to create something good for our schools. And at this time, I would like to turn it over to Dr. Day and Dr. Wilder. But first, we have invocation by Vice Mayor Kurt Dingler.
Let's pray. Lord, thank you for this group. Thank you for the work that they've done. Thank you for the good decisions that we are looking forward to. We pray that we do have wisdom in all that we do and that you would be pleased with all the conversations that we have today. Pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Yes, we can do a pledge. Through the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Turn it over to Dr. Wilder and Dr. Day.
Okay, well, what I'm gonna do is just go through the final report of our joint city and schools task force. It will be up on the screen. Dr. Wilder, do you want to say anything before I go through it?
Just thank you for all the support, all the School Board members, the City Council members for working on this project. And thank you for Dr. Day for leading the project as co-chair. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, let's see if this works. Okay, so as I said, this is a PowerPoint version of the final report. Both the PowerPoint and the PDF version are attached to the agenda for this evening's meeting for anyone who wants to have a copy. So, whoops, almost hit the button again. This joint committee was formed by the Lynchburg mayor and school board chair on February 12th. And when the committee met for the first time, we felt that we didn't have a clear enough statement of purpose. So the first thing we did was to try to establish what that purpose would be as we understood it. And the essential part of that is here in italics, "The purpose of the joint committee is to explore policy matters and funding that concern both governing bodies. The committee will provide collaborative review, analysis, and recommendations regarding the use of infrastructure funds. The committee will meet bi-weekly or at the discretion of the co-chairs to work on topics including, but not limited to, the following: identify long-term goals and develop a short-term action plan; identify location of student population and determine system capacity; overview of building conditions and major maintenance needs; budget and capital improvement program; and ongoing revenue and efficiency considerations." And I want you to take special note of the second bullet there because I'm gonna refer to that on the next page. So the committee met on February 27, March 12, April 3, and April 10. And that second bullet is, well, we discussed everything except the second bullet because we felt it was more than we could reasonably do in the timeframe that we have. So we didn't really address the second bullet. We then considered over 30 possible recommendations based on that information and the discussion that we had had, ultimately deciding on the eight that are going to be presented on the subsequent pages here. We believe that these recommendations will help Lynchburg better provide for its public schools, the students they serve, and initiate more constructive relations between City Council and the school board in the future. The committee understands that it has no authority to compel any action of the City Council or the school board or to intervene in their decision-making. It can only recommend. But we hope that both bodies will take these recommendations seriously. The recommendations themselves are in boldface below, and in some cases, there is a little bit of explanation. And at least in the PDF version of this, some links to a couple relevant documents. So the first couple recommendations concern the city's CIP plan. The first one I've listed here is to rearrange the order of the allocations that were in the city manager's CIP plan. The city manager's proposed CIP plan scheduled these allocation amounts in a different order, in very roughly 10 million the first year, fiscal year 2026, 30 million in 2027, and 20 million in 2028. We're recommending that that be reordered so that the 30 million comes up front, the 20 million after that, and the 10 million at the end. So that the idea is that more of the funds would be available to work with up front. Secondly, once the city adopts its CIP plan through 2020, 2030, we recommend that changes not be made to it without prior consultation with the school board. Regarding the school's operating budget, as you probably know, the school requested a 5.5 million increase in the city's allocation to its operational funding, and our recommendation is the city provide that full amount, 5.5. Now, we recognize that that's beyond what the city manager's initial budget included, but we are recommending that that be increased. So regarding school facilities planning, we've had multiple people express to us the importance of the repairs at the track at EC Glass High School. And so our recommendation is that be kept as a high priority. We recommend that the school board adopt the plan coming to it from the Facilities and Finance Committee. This is in reference to the plan recommended to the school board by its own Facilities and Finance Committee and detailed in a presentation by Dr. Copeland to the board at its April 1 meeting. This is the plan that concerns the repurposing of TC Miller. Now, I should say that subsequent to the committee forming this final report, the school board did consider that plan and did approve the first phase of that plan, which is specifically the conversion of TC Miller to an alt ed facility. Next, the school board should make a decision to close a second elementary school in fiscal year 2026, 27. And we recommend that no new school buildings be constructed during the current CIP cycle, in other words, through 2030. And then lastly, we recommend that either this committee or a similar one should continue meeting at least quarterly to discuss cost-saving ideas involved in both city and school resources, including possible mergers of closely related city and school departments in fiscal year 2027. So those are the eight recommendations that the joint committee came up with. And then in conclusion, the committee believes that it has now completed the work assigned to it. And in keeping with the limited timeframe intended at its inception, the committee understands that it is now to be dissolved. That is the end of our report. So at this point, Mr. Mayor, I guess what we'll do is see if anyone has questions or just wants to make a comment about it.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Wilder?
I was wondering maybe if we could go, maybe we could discuss each item one by one, if we have any comments about each item. I thought that might be kind of helpful. So if we talk about number one, thank you, for number one, you know, I understand the committee made some decisions. You know, I was one of the dissenting votes on that decision. The city manager, as well as the acting superintendent, was not in favor of that funding schedule for the capital improvement projects because, basically because it takes some time to do steady work, plans, and designs. So that's why they preferred the other plan, like, was it like 10, 23, whatever the other plan was as far as the funding cycle. And then the city manager did that cycle for funding based on what the capital projects we already had in place for the city and what the city could do adequately with the funding sources we had and also our funding formula we had for our, so it would be a stress on the city. That's why I wasn't in favor of, number one, I was more so in favor of the recommendation from the city manager as well as the school acting superintendent. Thank you.
I voted just the opposite. I voted that we would recommend the reorder because some of the, some of the work that needs to be done in the schools does not require a great deal of pre-planning. We don't need architectural plans to replace a roof. We don't need architectural plans to replace a field. Those things can be done if the money's available. And then that also, the 30 million up front would give us, we would be able to do the urgent repairs that don't require planning, architecture, and engineering, but also give us money to start that process as well. The initial $10 million will only give us enough money to do certain things, and we would not be able to do both of those things concurrently.
Mr. Chair.
I just wanted to bring some facts to, the deferred maintenance in school system is $109 million. Six of our 11 elementary schools are rated below 70. Below 70 means in dire need of repairs. And we keep our most precious assets in those buildings. You ask anybody who's mother and father, they'll tell you, they'll give up their home, they'll give up themselves for their child. So as, it's our moral responsibility to take care of that yesterday. We are talking about it today. Athletic fields and EC glass is falling apart to a point where we cannot use them starting fall semester. So these are urgent needs, and I'm not looking at dollars and cents. You look at the bigger picture, it's $109 million is the need. What percentage of that need can we fulfill now? Based on these numbers, I see about 30%, less than one-third of the need is being fulfilled in these numbers. But these needs are real, and these needs are needed, were needed yesterday, and we are talking about in next year. Thank you.
Mr. Ferrari?
Play devil's advocate. I will play dollars and cents. So let's say, let me start here. What would the reorganization of the funding schedule look like and why?
Well, our suggestion is just the dollar amounts by year. We are not doing anything more detailed than that. We're just recommending that the 30 million that was proposed for fiscal year 27 be made available, I'm sorry, 2028, be made available in fiscal year 2026. We're just reordering, that's all.
Has the superintendent indicated that he could spend $30 million on these items within the first year?
Can I answer that question?
Yes. You don't need superintendent to tell you, you look at the deferred maintenance in the school district, that money can be consumed. If need is 109 million to use it, it means 109 million can be used today. It may take time to do the RFP and all those things, but you know, the needs are existing, already existing. It's not being for the future plans.
Has the superintendent told us and the public if he can spend the $30 million in the first year?
If I can comment to that. And I'll just reiterate what was brought up at the joint task force meeting, that from my perspective and after conferring and looking at everything and the timing, 30 million in year one is challenging to expense. I do want to point out that the 60 million total is roughly half of what the greater needs are. And here's the justification on why the 10 million works better in year one, okay? Your primary window to do projects in schools happens to start the first week of June, and it ends sometimes towards the end of August. So in a perfect summer, you've got 10 to 12 weeks of time where you can get into buildings. You can do certain work with the buildings occupied by students, but you don't do HVAC work when folks are in the buildings, if you can avoid it, because it creates discomfort in the classrooms. Heating and air conditioning and the comfort of the individuals in the classroom makes for the best learning environment. So given that we're already in April and that the first round of funding would not become available until July 1st, it's very challenging to obligate and expend $10 million in the first 12 months when anything that you're gonna do in the summer of 2025, we have to have already coming in for bid right now so that we could start work this summer. So it would be challenging to use the larger sum of money on the front end of this proposal. And those, I'm just reiterating what I mentioned at that meeting, that the 10, 30, 20 works out best because that gives you the majority of your funding in your second year, and then you can catch up on all the rest of everything else in the third year. And some of this stuff won't actually bill out until the fourth year, just based off of how projects get completed.
Thank you, Dr. Copeland. If we did do the 30 million in the first year, considering that's a very heavy front-loaded budgetary maneuver, I'll call it, if we didn't expend, we meaning the city and the schools, didn't expend the full 30 million because projects weren't able to get lined up, they couldn't be done, what happens to that remainder, that balance? I believe I know the question, but I want the public to know. So it, it goes over?
The appropriation would carry forward.
Okay, the appropriation would carry forward. Why would that not go to fund balance?
Because it's a back fund, it's not still all.
Right. So it would stick with them. Okay. How much of this 30 million would be financed versus cash up front?
Depending on projects, we would most likely bond it, put it on our line of credit.
Okay, so for those who can hear, we would likely bond it and put it on our line of credit first.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Reed?
Oh, okay. No, I, um, my only other question on this, I have a number of questions, but I don't want to take up the whole time. How would this rejigger the entire capital improvement plan for the city overall? What would the impact be? They're working on it.
Sorry. We, we would need to reorganize some projects to make room for it.
I'm gonna play with you a little, Donna. Some projects, are we talking, you know, a few, a lot, major impact?
With a pretty major impact, if you're adding $20 million to it, we'd need to move at least $20 million somewhere else, either in an out year or something. We'd need, if those were transportation projects, we'd need to work with VDOT on our revenue share funding in all those projects.
I have further insights and thoughts, but I'll reserve them.
Ms. Reed?
So I guess, those are the same questions I have. So we heard from the superintendent explaining very logical reasons as to why you would wait and do it the way it was proposed, spreading the money out, the 10, 20, 30, based on the best time to do the projects, which really is the, the summer break, to avoid having to do things while the children are in the buildings. Obviously, when you have emergency situations, you can't avoid it, but when you're planning things out, the best time to do it is during the summer months. So you have superintendent agreeing with the plan, and then we have our, you know, financial team who has made the suggestion based on the financial component of the city, who is the, you know, the entity that's providing the money, saying it's also the best thing for us to do for our financial status, considering the other projects we have in play and also with our, probably our credit agency looking at us and debt and so forth. So I think we have to consider all that when making the decision. It's not that we don't all know how much is needed. And you guys know I'm a huge, I want to, if it were up to me and I were Bill Gates, I'd write you the whole check, and we have it done already, okay? So it's not a question of the need and how much is needed right away. It's just about being wise and the timing and when we can get it done and, and the financial component on, on that side as well. So while I understand the logic of why recommending the reverse, we also have to look at what we've heard tonight and, and the logic behind that. So I think the way it was originally proposed and why we need to probably do it the way it was suggested is, is the right thing to do. So just my thought on it.
One thing that we learned in the committee meetings is that the 10, 30, 20, the 30 can change with the next city council. It is not guaranteed that the 30 million will be allocated in the next fiscal year. It could change. Whereas it'd be more difficult if they allocated the money up front. And I understand that we wouldn't be able to do a lot of the actual projects, but there's architectural and engineering work that needs to be done. That could be getting done during the school year so that we could hit the ground running at the beginning of the next fiscal year, since those funds will already be there and allocated. And I'm thinking, and that's my philosophy, is let's do the groundwork, let's do the engineering studies, let's do the capital, let's do the renovation plans during the school year so that June 1st of next year, we can actually start some projects. If we wait until the next year to even allocate the money for the engineering studies, architectural designs, and those things, then we're gonna be putting it another year behind.
I understand the superintendent's concern about summer, but there's, there's a front-end summer and there's a back-end summer. When the money is allocated, it'll be July 1st this year. I understand some of the summer is gone. But if you look at the tail-end summer, that's where the funds could be used. That'll be the June, July of the, this fiscal year will still be working. You see what I'm saying? So depending on which summer do you want to use, the logic says, yes, we can use that money. I just wanted to make that clarification.
Mr. Mischin?
This is working? Okay. So for me, it comes down to one factor, and I believe I asked this question during the joint committee meeting, but the, I'm gonna ask it again. The $10 million, what would that $10 million mostly cover? What would be the, what would you do with that $10 million in the first year as it's structured now? Do we have an idea on that?
He's in the beginning stages of formulating that plan.
The way I understood it was that most of that $10 million would be design engineering and things, things of that nature. But I also understand that we don't necessarily need design or engineering for roofs. And there's about six and a quarter, six and a half million dollars, I pulled the, the presentation they gave to us right here, in just roof work. And, you know, when I, when I see things like the roof leaks in the gymnasium at EC Glass High School, now I hope that there's no plans to refinish those floors that summer before that roof's fixed, right? Because that roof is leaking into the gymnasium where the basketball court is, and every time it leaks, if nobody's there, then, then, you know, we end up a situation where we gotta refinish those floors. So I would hope, because I also understand that the best time to refinish those floors is in the summer, that we're gonna fix that roof before we fix those floors. And I really, really want to make sure we get those roofs fixed. I'm flexible on that $30 million number, but what I'm not flexible on, for me and my position with this, is the 10 million plus whatever it takes to fix all the roofs across the division, because that should happen. We gotta keep the water out of those buildings. Every time water gets into those buildings, it causes more damage. Water in those buildings can also create mold and other hazards that we don't want the staff and our students exposed to. And, and I just think that it makes sense to front-load all the roof repairs into year one and get that knocked out, because water will damage other work if we do it inside as well. So I mean, it's, I just don't see any other way to look at it than fixing those roofs first. That's my priority.
Taylor, could I, could I add one thing at this point? Folks, replacing a roof on a commercial building or a high school building is not like replacing a roof on your house. It does require architectural work because there are construction documents that need to be developed, there are specifications that need to be developed, and in some instances, there might be some changes. So there is architectural work that goes into the front end of every roof that we replace. So please, don't, don't think that it's like replacing stuff at your house and just ripping off the tar paper and putting down some more architectural shingles. We're talking EPDM or roofs that have significant insulation layers underneath them, there are significant tear-offs, there's the water drainage and the sloping of all of that to make sure that the water gets to the correct drainage points for runoff. So I'm not putting a roof on a high school, middle school, or an elementary school that architect helping me develop those plans.
I believe that, as Dr. Gupta said, there's no reason that we wouldn't be able to get the engineering and the design work for that done and have those started by the beginning of next summer, or maybe even sooner. Those roofs need to be a priority. We gotta keep that water out of those buildings.
So in the, in the committee meeting, the joint committee meeting as well as this evening, the main thing that I'm really hearing is a shared concern on how to efficiently address as many concerns in the schools as quickly as possible. And so, as Mr. Mischin said, I, there are two elements with the numbers above, and I share the desire to ensure that the CIP is followed through, and so upfronting cash as much as possible to this project is valuable. But the other aspect of that, of course, is how can we address as many concerns in the schools as quickly and sustainably as possible? And one of the concerns that came up in the ad hoc joint committee meetings was with deferred maintenance, we all know this, the cost continues to increase over time. And so how can we work with Dr. Copeland and Mr. Bordeka in a sustainable way where it's not overloading? You all want to be respectful to that and making sure that those monies are protected for the schools. But how can we work to establish a list of how do we address as many concerns as quickly as possible and ensure that the city is committed to seeing that through? So that's what these numbers reflect in the nature of my vote. Mr. Mischin brings up the roofs, that, and I understand the concerns that you bring up with that, Dr. Copeland, but that is a primary concern. If we're going to do this work, we need to make sure that it's done in a way that the work that we are putting forward is protected, that we're not redoing everything because of continuous leaks, as, as we've seen a pattern of lately. So that's my, I guess, support of the general trajectory of, of this CIP, is how do we address as many concerns within the schools as quickly as possible in a sustainable manner? And how do we ensure that the money gets to the school buildings? Because that has to be a priority in our CIP moving forward. Thank you.
So what I heard from the superintendent is these roofs aren't cheap, and I want to make sure there's enough money there to really fix them, because every day that goes by that they're not fixed, it gets more expensive for the taxpayers of Lynchburg. So let's, let's get that prioritized, whether it's end of this summer, beginning of next summer, as the chairman said. The second point I have, as a student of politics in Lynchburg for many years, I appreciate the desire of the school board to get clear direction, and this committee specifically. I heard you, I came to the meetings and I heard the concern that if we don't get a strong commitment up front, that that money from city council can be fickle, and it can be here today and gone tomorrow. So let's get it today. As a council, city councilman, I'm, I understand, because I watch this. I'm relatively new to council, but I have seen it go back and forth. I want to make that strong commitment to our city schools to fix the neglect that's, that's piled up for years. This didn't happen overnight. So let's, let's get it fixed, and sooner the better.
I just wanted to comment that, in my recollection, when we talked about this, the motive for the reordering was very much the same as for the second recommendation. The concern that if we are told that, well, the bulk of this money is coming a year or two years from now, but then we get to that point, and for whatever reason, the city is not able to follow through with that, then we've, we've deferred a maintenance project to a future where there is to a future where there is no funding for it. So the motive was to try to ensure that we have-- we're able to follow through on the plans that we formulate now. And in my mind, that was the motive behind reordering things, to try to get a commitment to that money as early as possible.
I'll shift slightly to the second point. So this is an educational moment for our newer members to the board and the council. If we have our attorney available, I would-- this is bringing him in on this. City council, regardless of what you want, cannot bind-- make a determination that binds another council. Whether you want that commitment or not, I mean, that can't be done. So point number two, as far as I'm concerned, as much as we want it, it's not possible. You're gonna have to take our word for it. Now, whether you believe it or not is the right question to ask, of course, but as far as point number two goes, and as it applies to the first point, we can't make a decision that locks in a future council. So please keep that in mind. It's not possible to do.
So I think the point of the second bullet is not that we expect anything to be locked in, but if city council finds itself in a situation where it can't honor a commitment it made the previous year, it ought to come consult with the school board before making modifications.
I think it's important that we have consistent communication. So I think whether the city will alter it or not, or whatever, but if we have a consistent communication, that won't be a problem. If we're meeting regularly, if the school, like back in the day, we had the school board chair, the vice chair, the manager, city manager, city staff superintendent, city managers, they would meet, I believe it was monthly, I believe, we could discuss those issues of that nature, all the CIP challenges that we're having. So if we're meeting regularly anyway, that wouldn't be a problem. So we just gotta make sure we're communicating better. Thank you.
If that's the case, then the conclusion should be edited, because it says that we understand that we are to be dissolved, but in recommendation number eight, it says that you would like to continue and/or a new committee be formed for the same purpose. So it sounds like with what he just said and what he said, the preference is to keep the continuance of this particular committee on a periodic basis so that we can get number two. Otherwise, I would agree that you can't enforce number two, they can commit to number two, but since it can't be enforced, it's better to just choose number eight and continue that committee.
I agree with you, Dr. Wilder and Board Member Jalil. The thing is with the chair, vice chair, and meeting, that's not a public meeting. So the public doesn't have-- it's not announced in public and public cannot see. And so, but this meeting with three members from each body is a public meeting. Everything is documented and for record, and people can participate.
If people can hear it, I'll be happy to read it. So the-- so number three is the city should support LCS's full request for five and a half million dollar increase in the city's allocation to its operational funding. And I'll start off with saying that I didn't support this. And the reason that I didn't support this is simply because we need to find those efficiencies within the school division, right? I know that the five and a half million dollar increase is a big ask, but, you know, there was a recommendation from the city manager to do 2.7 million, and it's huge, the five and a half million dollars. It's just a huge ask. And when I see opportunities for us to look at, you know, just like I said last time in this very building, looking at consolidating information technology departments, we have the City of Lynchburg and the Lynchburg City Schools Technology Department in this building we're all in right now, and they are completely separate. They are two distinct and different departments, and the opportunity for cost savings that I see there is incredible. And I think Dr. Wilder had even mentioned that they talked about this in the past, and that's gonna be one of the points that we get to down the road. So I didn't support this, I just, I think it's too much, and we need to look at where we can find these efficiencies in the school division.
Yes, thank you. I did support this motion. Again, I know we're having some challenging times, that's why I also suggested looking at our real estate tax rate. You know, we talk about education as a priority, but then we see all the needs in our city. You know, so many times you get so many comments, oh, the taxes are too high, or this and that, but then they wanna call and say, oh, why is my trash not being picked up? Why is this road not being repaired? Why is this-- why do we have continuing issues with buildings not being repaired? School not being repaired? Or is it a neglect? No, it's because of funding. As I said earlier, when I was on the school board almost 20 years ago, Sandusky Elementary School was on the plan then, but it got shifted back, because I think heritage was more priority because of the condition of the building, so it got shifted back. So again, things keep happening. So there's a solution here. We can increase our real estate rate, and then all the extra funds can go to our school system, and we can have some more funds for our school system. But I did support this, because I think education is important. When you look at, we did a presentation last week about the fire department, and we look at the fire department budget over the past, I think, five years or 10 years, the fire department budget has increased by like $10 million, but yet the school budget is like the same over the past like 10 years. I don't have the exact numbers, so don't quote me, but again, if you look at the numbers in the new police department, which is beautiful, I support fire department, I support police department, but I support our children and our educational system. So when I look at all the other funds, we can find funds for this, I think we need to find funds for our children. Thank you.
Sound offensive, I apologize upfront, but when superintendent made his presentation to the school board for the budget, 5.5 million, the term used was bear bone. And it has been needed, and with all due respect, Councilmember Mishin, I need-- efficiencies need to be across the board. Think about that, if you have five kids, and you pick on one and leave the other four out, and say, you have not done this, you have not done this, you have not done that, what will the child feel? The child feel the mommy and daddy is picking on them and leaving the other four out. So efficiency is a good word. I'm a business guy, it's a perfect word, but it needs to be applied equally to everybody. I have honorable policemen here, you know, LPD, LPWD, look at every unit in the city for efficiency. Don't look at just my little kids for efficiency. Kids are the last one. If you look in a household, the parent will give their own meal to their child. You know, Dr. Wilder, what I'm talking about. So efficiency is a good word, but the school system has been efficient for a long time, and it's time to turn clock to give what it's needed. To do our-- 80% of our budget is human resource, 80%. That's teacher-staff salaries. 3% increase comes each year from the governor, but it's only SOQ-funded, which is half of that. The other half, the locality has to pitch in. And when I came on the school board, I thought there's a lot of fluff, but as you look into the numbers, it looks like the needs are increasing, the behavioral problems are going up, the teacher alone in the classroom is not enough, you need help there. So when people say 200 more employees, be in my shoes, go teach a class one day for a week, and then you'll find out you need somebody behind you to help you out when somebody gets out of control. So those are real needs, and we don't talk on camera all the time to get political mileage, but those needs were there and will continue to happen. Thank you.
In concept, the 5.5, the 10, the 1, the .5, I'm not so concerned about the number when I share this. I would look to the school board and say, what are you doing with whatever additional dollars you're getting? For me, and I know there-- I'm gonna-- I've learned this in the five and a half years I've been doing this, I'm not gonna make everybody happy, and I'm not gonna make a segment I don't intend to offend here happy when I say this. The starting wage is not my concern. My concern is if you're here for five years, you know how much you're making. If you're here for 10, you know how much you're making. If you're here in 15, you know how much more you're making. To our men and women in blue, to our firefighters, and I don't know if we did the step plan for dispatchers as well, they know. Yeah, the firefighter budget has increased that significantly. Why? Because council adopted a step program. You know exactly where you're gonna be with time of service. That's what we need in the teacher front. We need it more. We need it more. And I hear scoffing behind me, but yet all I hear is, I've been doing this job for 20-something years, and I'm making $6,000 more than a teacher who was just hired. It's not enough, y'all. So I hear you on, you know, we want $50,000 a year. Fine, but what are you gonna do to the compression of the teacher who's been there for 20 years? That's where I would submit, we need to find some tweaks.
This is a 3% increase that applies to all the teachers.
Please don't cut me off. I'm advocating that that is a huge heart of where I'm coming from. We could talk about starting salary all we want, guys, but to me, we've gotta do more on retaining and making sure we're the premier educators in central Virginia. And I don't-- I can't believe that-- it seems like I'm getting scoffed at that notion. I'm getting hesitation with that. Because if that's where it's at, I've made some serious mistakes in who I'm appointing to the school board. So I think, we can talk about 5, 2, 10, it doesn't matter to me. We need to be-- where's the money going? 47,000, 48,000, sure. I want you to know, if you're here for 10 years, here's how much you're making. Because every teacher I talk to, and I hear, okay, it's being done already, it's not enough. So it matters to me where it's going. That's all I wanted to say, Mr. Mayor.
It's been a while since we talked about budget proposals, so I'd like to recap for this group. What made up the 5.5 million dollars, and I've got my CFO behind me to make sure I don't miss anything, but it starts with the local component match for the 3% governor's pay raise. It includes the step increases for all employees, they're at that point in their career where they will get a step increase. It increases the starting minimum wage from $15 an hour to $17 an hour, and it will hopefully increase the starting teacher salary to that $50,000 component. It also includes all the required components for VRS and other benefits supports, including the most recent health insurance significant increases and fully funds those. It includes 10 bus aids on our highest need buses where we have student behavior issues, and it puts a building-level substitute teacher in every building. Did I miss anything? And it makes a meager attempt to keep up with inflation relative to our recurring cost for electricity bills, software maintenance contracts, water bills, and all those other things that we have to pay for on a monthly basis. It by no means keeps us up with what's happened in inflation over the past three to four years. So when it was put together, the initial numbers that were presented to me were north of $10 million, and we pulled back from that to get to the 5.5 for the most critical components, which I have outlined for this group.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple things. First, I am gonna quote you on it, Dr. Wilder, I actually looked it up while we were sitting here. Actual dollars spent in the Lynchburg City Schools budget in 2015, or actual revenues, were $87,351,955. Actual revenues for Lynchburg City Schools in 2024 were $111,52,271. So 10 years, there's a pretty substantial difference. The, you know, the-- there's two things I wanna recognize here. One is, 100% agree with what Councilmember Faraldi was saying. Two is, I love the quote you used, Dr. Copeland, when you said that you are building the airplane as you're flying it. Is that right? Is that, I think, how you explained it to us?
That's one of them.
That's one of them? So that was, you know, recognize that we're in a unique situation here, where we've got an interim superintendent who's just doing an incredible job that got thrown into the middle of this. Hello? There we go. Yeah, we've got an interim superintendent that was, you know, thrown into this mess that was left for him. You know, when we passed the budget a couple of years ago, and they were concerned about the starting pay, I think it was initially a 15 and 50 plan. You know, I get it, I understand, but having been through that, working for the city for 14 years, I know what it was like, where every year, instead of giving people increases for their time, they were raising the starting pay, so you'd have a 10-year employee making the same thing as a first-year employee. And that's what was going on in the city. Now that's been fixed. Now, with the steps, the steps in Lynchburg City Schools for a long period of time, correct me if I'm wrong on this, weren't fully funded. And that kinda created a similar problem there, and then when you started raising that starting pay, that also creates an issue. But what we need to be focused on, from my perspective, when it comes to this part regarding staff and operating funds and things like that, is what are we gonna do to retain veteran teachers? Because that's the problem. That's what we're running out of. They're leaving left and right. And that's not just money, because I can tell you right now, there were many, many years where I begged my wife to apply in other divisions, but she didn't, because she loves where she works, she loves the kids she serves, she loves the community she teaches in, right? But the veteran teachers in Lynchburg City Schools were being left behind for a long time. When I'm getting messages from folks, I just got one last week, I looked it up, I'm being told there's 15 veteran teachers that aren't returning to E.C. Glass. That's a problem, right? And that's not just money. It's not just money. It is the leadership and the management in the division, and it's not on you, Dr. Copeland. I know that you've come into this and you're doing the best you can, but there are real issues, and I know you're working overtime to try to fix these issues, and I appreciate that, and that's what needs to be focused on, is to making sure that the environments in these school buildings support our teachers, that they know the administration is gonna support our teachers, that when the teachers are having challenges in the classrooms, that they know that they have the support, that they know they can count on their administrative staff, not only in their division, but downtown, and I fully know that they can count on Dr. Copeland right now, and I hope, and I urge, the school board members in here, in your process in selecting a new superintendent, that you select somebody that's gonna back up our teachers. Thank you.
Councilmember Faraldi's point, and it goes back to my argument of five kids, and I'm the one who's been picked on. When city council approved 50,000 minimum wage for LPD, what was the reasoning behind it? To attract talent to our police department, right? What's wrong with when LCS is planning to do that? Not now. Mr. Andrews, you know, right? We've been trying to do it for years, but the funding was not there. When I look at a refuse collector entry position in Lynchburg, city of Lynchburg, is $20 an hour. Our bus drivers are making entry level at $15 an hour. I'm not-- but you got to remember my five kids? One kid you pick on for efficiency, other four kids you leave it alone. What the kid will feel, exactly what I'm feeling today, is if I feel like angry, that it's not anger, it's just that being left out year after year. You know, the arguments are given, there's a step increase for teachers, but the problem is the younger people can switch very easily from city to county for a couple of thousand dollars. That's what's happening. Veterans are leaving, no doubt, because the VRS is full, they're retiring for different reasons, but the talent at the entry level is missing. I'm gonna shut up now.
And I'm one of those veteran teachers. So, and we went 10 years without a pay increase, and teachers leave because they're frustrated. So that's just something to keep in mind.
I was one of those people that worked in the transportation department, and the transportation went 10 years. We had bus drivers making $10.35 an hour, and they did it for five consistent years, no matter how good they drove the buses. No matter how good they drove the buses, it never went up. So there are some things that, there are some gaps that need to be made up. And I don't know the exact number, I'm hoping, but there was also a change made in the budget that the two point seven million is not a true two point seven million because there's a million of that in the increase in insurance costs. Am I getting that wrong? So if it's a full two point seven, then I'll be quiet.
Dr. Gupta, you make an excellent point about, you know, we have done the same thing across other departments for the same exact reason. You know, we address the issues with the police department and the fire department for the purpose of recruitment and retention. And so that we could retain our really great law enforcement and first responder community and recruit great people. And we've done that, and we have to be willing to do the same thing at our schools. And we are losing great teachers for many reasons. And the education system, we're not getting people majoring in education. It's one of the greatest dying majors in any college or university right now. So I know that y'all are having to hire people without degrees in education and incentivize them to get their teaching certifications while they're on the job, which is fine because there's some great people that are qualified in other ways, that have good degrees or good skill sets. But, you know, we have to invest in order to have the best quality teachers for our kids so they have the best outcome. The other thing I think it's very important for us to consider is what's going on in our schools and the multiple reasons that our teachers are frustrated. It's not just financial. I think it would be great for some people to watch the Forty Ways Coalition meeting last night because we had a panel of youth from our high schools. And it was profound what they said. They said they do not feel safe in our schools. They did not feel safe. And that was the number one place they said they didn't feel safe, was at school. And both groups actually asked for metal detectors at both of our high schools. And they both gave examples of the number of fights that they have witnessed over the years they've been there. They were articulate, y'all would be so proud of these students. I was so proud of how well spoken they were. But they were explaining why our kids aren't coming to school, why they come in late, the fears that they have. So yes, teachers are so important, they're frustrated with the conditions, the kids are frustrated. We have to address that. And it is expensive. Over the years I've been on council, I've heard parents talk about it, I've heard pushback from adults, but we have to listen to our students too. Because it is an issue we need to address, along with making sure that we're addressing the needs and concerns, the financial concerns of our teachers, but also the other things that are going on in our schools.
So I want to sound in accord with Mr. Mischens. This is not just a pay problem. There is a leadership, you know, there's been some leadership issues, some administrative issues that need to be corrected. But I think it's a both and, because pay is a very important thing. I mean, this is something that people need. So I think it's a both and issue. And that five point five, I do think, is bare bones. And a large portion of it is going to go to raise the salaries, to get the seventeen dollars minimum per hour and fifty thousand dollar minimum for our teachers. I guess the analogy that I would use is, we find ourselves where we are, right? We can say it's for this reason, that reason, but we are where we are. And our superintendent and his staff have told us that we need five point five million bare bones next year. It would be akin to if I lost my job or got a demotion, but I had a big mortgage. I have a plan to move into a smaller home or an apartment and reduce that monthly fee. But until such time as I do that, I still owe that mortgage that I signed on for. And I think maybe that's where we find ourselves. We need the five point five million dollars. We've got to pay that mortgage. We can work on efficiencies, build the plane, sorry, build the plane as we're flying it. And hopefully, the following years, you know, subsequent years, we can be more efficient and reduce that need. But right now, we need to pay the mortgage. Thank you.
May I say, we're getting low on time here. We have a board meeting at five thirty, which is about a half hour away. So maybe we should talk about all of these at once?
I'm asking the school board to pursue putting metal detectors at our high schools. That's all I want to say. I want to be on the record, very crystal clear about that. I talked to Danny Rule about it. We need to put metal detectors at our high schools. I don't care how many parents complain about it, because I know there's parents that complain about it. But it's your job to do what you need to do to protect those kids and to ignore the parents that don't want metal detectors.
To our budget in this current fiscal year.
Thirty, twenty, ten, we can figure it out.
I'll wait for, there it is. I'll wait for, I think a lot of this is tied to the two things that I called for, which helped spur the conversation for this joint committee. But this second part was left out in the conversations, and it was regarding a school funding formula. My problem is, sure, five point five right now, what happens next year? And then the year after that, and then the year after that, and then the year after that? What's the plan? What's the strategy? If it's five now and it's three next, then all of a sudden, we're eight million, eight million more to the schools, which is probably warranted. But just played just the numbers, just the black and white of the numbers here. All of a sudden, now the city's talking about eight cents on the real estate rate, which is heatily discussed right now, hotly discussed right now, just in two years' time. Plus balancing all the other financial strains in the city. It's not an easy task, but we need to keep that in mind, folks. The school funding formula, I would hope, would take some of this into consideration. That was not incorporated into this body, and I think it really needs to. And again, the concept is very similar. We would know how much more the schools are going to get. And God forbid the economy hit this direction, how much less they would get. But at least we would all be operating on the same page. I share that, to say in combination with the rest of these items. Repairs for EC glass track. Have we talked about using other assets? I know I asked about city stadium for various reasons that can't be used. We have another track, we have another high school. Is there any benefit to say, you know what, for the next couple of years, until we can use one-time dollars to pay for the improvements here on this track, we're going to send you to Heritage for Track? I don't like it, but does that save us the cash? I'll skip to point six. This locks us in, if we were to do this, this locks us in in making a decision that we have no idea what the future's going to hold. Enrollment's going to continue to flatten, says the statisticians. I don't know. It's only gone down. Are we going to keep schools where one hundred and fifty students are at? I mean, are we going to keep Sandusky? No, because we've then made a decision that says we're not going to build a new school regardless of the circumstances. Again, that's, that's not strategic thinking, nor is it creative, it's just saying we're just not going to do it. Oh, I'm sorry, that was point number seven. Point number six, I would hope that the school board is having those discussions now regardless of what the recommendations are about what the future is for capacity. Those conversations should be happening. Why this was tasked to be a part of the subcommittee, I don't, I don't know. Y'all want to know how many dollars are coming your way? That's the biggest part of this. School closures is, that's y'all's bailiwick, and more power to you. And then the final point, yeah, there needs to be a consistent, public-facing body that meets regularly with an established agenda that is empowered by council, a vote of council with an actual resolution, like there already is, to ensure we have conversation flowing and make sure this is happening more. So I hope that puts a bow on my position on the questions.
My comment is, all of us know, if you're a sibling, if you're a spouse, if you're either the boss or have had a boss, you know that any two people are not going to agree all the time on anything, regardless of what that thing is. The fact that we have had these conversations with two different entities, those people that are most concerned about education, and those people that are most concerned about the city and all the things that the city recommends, lets us realize that we need to sit down and have these conversations on a regular basis so that we can hear the different perspectives that each of these entities represents. Because I'm not going to be always right, nor are you going to be always right. But if we can sit down and have a conversation and iron these things out and talk about what's best for kids, what's best for our city. Is raising the tax rate going to help anything or not? Are there things that we can do that are going to benefit our city? We're going to come up with some answers, some solutions. But we got to be able to sit down and have those conversations. So I commend the two entities for coming together to do this, but we can't stop now. We're just getting started. My comment.
Very good thoughts. We have a problem. I think that a lot of city council members are sharing partial information. And it seems to be a continual problem. When I first got on the board of the school board, it was recommended to me that I watch all the previous video Youtubes of the school board meetings. And I tried, and I did, some. But those are long videos, and there's a lot of them. And I was not about to catch up with a whole lot of popcorn and soda for that. It was tedious to learn, so to learn all of the things that encompass what we do and speak intelligently about it takes work and takes being there. I think that this department of the city, being LCS, is like a forgotten stepchild to a degree. I know it's not completely forgotten, but there's, we hear gaps in what's being said at city council. We hear gaps of just knowledge in what's going on. Good questions, but questions that are already well-known by us and were covered many times in the last couple of years that I've been on the board. So these things don't have to be. We are continually calling for, this is the bare bones, five point five million. We're continuing calling for more funds for a reason. We're continually behind. One solution I came up quickly with is that the city council should be informed of all our LCS turnovers in real time so you can see how serious the situation is. They're your employees, technically, right? They're our superintendent's employees, but they're all yours as well. You should see how many people are turning over constantly. We get these reports from HR all the time, and they show the details. And secondly, we're, we always seem, from the history of what I've experienced and read, we're always behind. This board works out of goodwill, solely out of goodwill, because the previous board from three-plus years ago removed any kind of stipend from this board. The school that he mentioned from twenty years ago, when he, when Mr. Dwight was on the school board, was earmarked for renovation or reconstruction, and that's been delayed, right? So there's all these things that are continually compounding. So I say, go ahead and put forth the thirty million into the school system, and then you'll have a good excuse to tell the people in the future that, well, we put it all in schools, so now we need to do this or that with your future decisions at the city council. But I see good reason to do these things. And lastly, number four and number eight, the people, the public have continually come to make public comments on these two issues. Number four, they are continually emailing and coming to us in support of number four. And they are continually coming and emailing us in opposition to number seven, not eight, not seven. But either way, these things should be decided on. I think today would be good. Thank you.
My last comment. When it comes to the school closure, yeah, the second elementary school in fiscal twenty-six, twenty-seven. So my only thought on that, and again, that's, schools, that's on you. That's your, that's your deal. All I'm asking is that, you know, I've been very vocal on the school closure process the last year plus. And my main concern has been just being fair to the families involved. Because it's kind of been like a game of ping pong for the families and the staff. To include just the recent closure of TC Miller, because it was done pretty suddenly, even though I know TC Miller's been talked about for a while, but when the actual closure happened, it was pretty late in this school year. So all I ask is that when you make this next decision, that you make it in the beginning of the year. And that you're, that you give the families and the staffs involved the full year to digest the plan, that you stick to the plan. There's no alternate plans, there's no plans that aren't on the plan. That y'all just make the plan and just, the community's going to be upset. We know that. They've shown us that, they're passionate about their schools. And if you feel like you have to close another school, you're just going to have to make that call and just stick with it. Because the going back and forth or the waiting late into the school year is not fair or right to the families or to the staff that is looking at their jobs. And I think we do owe that to all involved when you're making such a big decision. And it's been a really rough year and a half for the families that have been on edge for the back and forth. So I do ask that of you. And as you kind of go forward with the closure for TC Miller, I do ask that you make sure that you're accommodating those families as best you can since they're still waiting for a full answer of if that program is going to another school. I don't know if y'all have made a firm decision, but I have had families come to me asking about that and where they're supposed to go and what they're going to do. So just with that decision, I just ask you to keep those things in mind. Thank you.
Yeah, so kind of echoing on some of these concerns, what Councilmember Reed just said was excellent. And going back to kind of a couple of things on these last ones. One of the things that Councilmember Feraldi brought up was the funding formula. And that kind of also goes into what you were discussing because of the conversation that we had around that, that we haven't really spoke about, about this, you know, with this body. We had a copy of a resolution that was passed by Norfolk City Council fairly recently, actually directing the school board in Norfolk to begin the process of closing two schools a year immediately. Because the school board in Norfolk was failing to consolidate like they were supposed to do. And the consultant reports showed that there was seventy-plus million dollars of waste, as they called it, related to surplus schools. And, you know, part of what contributed to that was the funding formula, because there was no incentive. Norfolk used the funding formula, still uses the funding formula, there was no incentive for them to consolidate if the revenue was continuing to grow and grow and grow, and enrollment was continuing to decline, decline, decline. So that was one of the reasons why we actually spoke against that funding formula and opted to not make that a part of the final recommendation. But then that goes back to exactly what Councilmember Reed just said. You know, I don't ever want to be in a position in city council to look at the school board and say, you got to close schools. Right? And that means the school board needs to do their job. Right? So if the enrollment trends continue, and actually the enrollment trends are dropping faster than the projections the consultants have given us in the last three to five years, you know, you guys have got to do what you got to do, because there's a limited amount of resources. And as enrollment declines, state funding declines and those things. So, you know, speaking of that, and when we talk about the EC glass track, I can tell you right now, that is probably the one thing that I got emailed about the most during this joint committee process. That was the number one email from some great people that I know. And, you know, I had a lot of conversations with some really good folks and good parents. A lot of these kids, and I'm sure you're probably going to learn this with what you're doing, one of the only reasons that they show up to school is sports. One of the only reasons that they get good grades is sports and athletics, to be a part of that. And for them to have a track that's not safe, I think that Dr. Gupta had said that there's conversations that they may have to close this summer if they can't fix it this summer. We got to just do that, right? We got to get that fixed. So regard to the rest of this stuff, I'm pretty sure I supported the rest of these items on here. What was number eight? If we can just flip forward one more time?
Oh, they got a meeting? Okay. But then that's all I got. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I want to remind everybody that this is not a motion before city council. This is not a motion before the school board. This is recommendations of a, of a small group of people who are trying to find a way forward that they thought, um, both bodies ought to consider seriously. What city council does with these recommendations is city council's business. What the school board does with these recommendations is the school board's business. That, that our, our joint committee did have a long discussion about all of these, um, and this is what the majority agreed to. I circulated this report in advance, um, after our final meeting. This is nothing but recommendations to those two bodies.
Yes, sir. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank all the members of the joint committee on the council side, the school board side, and the staff on both sides.
Yes, sir.
But sir, I would recommend that, uh, as everybody has said, let's expand that. But to me, instead of having a very formal go-around-the-round-robin type thing, we should do a very informal retreat, uh, maybe in summer or beginning of summer, uh, with all the staff and the school board and city council. We had put our heads together, or if you're giving some money, how will it be used? You know, what, what do we need for these kids to be successful? Whether the SOL scores need to go up, right? What do we need, right? Councilman Reed, the education is first and final. So I thought, sir, if it's okay with your side and our side, instead of having this formal joint meeting, have a retreat. You know, we sit down someplace?
Yes.
And let everybody sit around in circular tables and put our heads together.
Yes, sir.
What do we do to make this place a better place? We all live here. We all, we have, we have to live here and die here, right? You have to play, but this is our, this is our hometown.
This is something we can look forward to. Yes, sir.
And, uh, as for now, this committee is resolved. Thank you all for all the hard work that you've done.